Thank you. The fire evacuation announcement, in case of fire, there are two ways to exit these chambers. To my left, through the council chamber doors, then turn left and walk down the stairs and right out of the building. And of course, behind you, there's another set of doors. In case there is an emergency, please walk far away from the building as far as you can. Thank you. Secretary, please call the roll.
Yes. Louis Fiore?
Here.
Virginia Higley?
Here.
Linda DeGray?
Here.
John Petronella is here. Francis Alamo?
Here.
Kieran Majmudar?
Here.
Kenneth Holinsky?
Here.
Vinnie Gorillo?
Absent.
He's absent.
Christian D'Antonio?
Here.
And Nicholas Lefakis?
Here.
At this point, I'd like to take the privilege of the chair to introduce our two members. I'm really ecstatic with these two members that were appointed this week by the council and are here tonight. First of all, a full-time member, Ken Holinsky. For those who don't know, Ken had served many years in service for this town, many years on the board, ended up being Board of Education Chairman, and then he went to the Town Council and was Deputy Mayor, and I'm not going to mention who he replaced. But Ken and I have worked together many times in the past, and I really look forward to working with you again, Ken. Thank you for volunteering to do this. Much appreciated. Last but not least, Nick Lefakis, who served also on a town council. And then with 16 years in planning zoning, Nick?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty, I see. And I had the privilege of watching Nick on here many, many times, and his experience and his demeanor and just how he handled himself here. It's a welcome addition and experience. So again, Nick, thank you so much for volunteering to come on here to this board. Much appreciated. I assure all of us, we welcome both of you here to join us. This is a fine group of people with a fine balance to represent the community, and I'm just very ecstatic. So again, welcome aboard, both of you.
Welcome, guys. Nice to see you.
All right, now we're on to the minutes. Take a motion to approve the minutes of special meeting for February 17th, 2022?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chairman Higley, seconded by Secretary Petronella. Is there any discussion or comments on the minutes for special meeting of February 17th? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. But the records show there's six in favor and three abstaining. Commissioner Alamo, the new commissioners, Holinsky and Lefakis, both abstaining from the minutes since they were not present.
That's right, I wasn't.
Take a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of Thursday, February 24th.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley, seconded by Commissioner Majmudar. Any discussion, missions, corrections need to be made to those minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Same aye. The records show there are six in favor and three abstains. Commissioner DeGray, Holinsky, and Lefakis abstaining from those minutes since they did not participate. Thank you. Moving on to the zoning enforcement report. Is there a zoning enforcement report tonight?
Nope. Here. There's nothing really, other than there was a question about the mini-mobile on freshwater. The height is at three, no higher than three units. So that's where that stands right now, to answer that question.
Okay, thanks. I know Vice Commissioner Gorillo had a couple of times asked, and thank you so much for your input. So no side yard issue either, you're pretty feel-good about the whole situation?
No, everything seems pretty good, the way they have it set up.
Great, thank you very much. Now move on to public participation. At this point in the meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission welcomes comments, concerns, and opinions relating to planning and zoning in Enfield from anyone who is present, provided that no one may discuss any matter of business at this time that is already elsewhere on our agenda, any matter as part of an open public hearing of the commission, or any matter where a decision of the commission may be pending. You will get the five minutes to speak, and if you need a second time, you'll get an additional five. So would anyone like to come forward, please? Can you make sure that the microphone is on? I think you know the procedure, your name and address?
I'm getting used to this. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Angela Foss, 16 Crescent Beach Drive. Good evening, Commissioners. I would like to ask a few questions. Number one, why are you voting yes on site plans for buildings that you do not know who the tenants will be? Number two, why would you vote yes on a site plan for the building on 113 North Maple Street? On that site plan, it clearly denoted that Agrimark would be one of the tenants. The JI stated, Agrimark, a Massachusetts-based company that distributes a wide variety of dairy products throughout the U.S., would occupy 260,500 square feet of the northern portion of the building, and a second tenant would occupy the remaining. According to those plans, operations for Agrimark would involve the storage of incoming products and distribution of sold products. Referring to the Enfield zoning regulations, page 56, section 6.20, this clearly falls under the use agricultural products, manufacturing, and storage. Under the I-1 district, that requires a special permit. Why was a special permit not required on this building? It should be. How do you proceed to move that building from a site plan to a special permit? Why would you vote yes to the building at 35 Bacon Road? You have no idea who the tenants will be. Without knowledge of the tenants, you must put a stop to these proceedings and wait until you have knowledge of what will be put into these buildings. Commissioners, what are your next steps when you think about future builds? What happens to the new tenants if they do not fall under a mere site plan review? Is that then left up to the zoning enforcement operator? What is the recourse? I know that at the end of the last meeting, several of you stated that your decision was a hard one. I do not know who is instructing you to vote yes on the site plan only, but you need to ask these people the right questions. Your first question should be, who will the tenants be? Without knowledge of a tenant, you cannot merely allow a site plan. South Windsor voted on a proposed site plan because, like you, they have a statement at the beginning of their industrial districts that aligns with your statements of purpose. Enfield's section 6.00 purposes. The purpose of the industrial zone is to establish a district for manufacturing, industrial, and other compatible uses to encourage the most appropriate development of industrial land in harmony with the neighborhood. Please, for your first step to your decision when you make future decisions, drive the area and be sure that this statement is true. It's not been true for 113 North Maple Street, and it is definitely not true for 35 Bacon Road. As I read through the concerns that we had and the residents near 113 North Maple Street had, we all had the same concerns, and yet you just keep voting yes. You can also vote no. It was obvious from the comments on 35 Bacon that some of you wanted to vote no, but did not feel that you could vote no. It's time to begin voting against big business and voting with your residents. Vote no, vote your conscience. This is your town as well as ours. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for public participation? Anyone else for public participation? For the last time, anyone else for public participation? Seeing none, public participation is closed. We move on to new public hearings. Would the secretary please read the application? Then we'll open the hearing.
Yes, Mr. Chair. The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting of Thursday, March 10th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. in the Town Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. Public hearing number 3028, 786 Enfield Street, special permit application for Class IV liquor permit. Shawn Realty LLC owner, Merrick Gascoria, applicant, map 29, lot 3, BG Zone.
Thank you. Is the applicant or representative here tonight? Please, why don't you come on forward and just state your name and address for the record and...
Hi, my name is Merrick Gascoria. I'm living in 10 Elm Avenue, Enfield, Connecticut.
Thank you. And briefly, could you just explain, just for the record, basically what you're asking for?
Yes, last September, I opened Polish grocery store, Alicia Deli, next street. Basically, I didn't plan to have a Polish beer, but a lot of my customers wants to buy Polish beer, and that's why I want to try to apply for the license and for that special permit use.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the Commissioners? Commissioner DeGray?
I just have one, because there was a comment about distance 1,000 feet for a liquor permit from a church and school and that. Question would be, is wouldn't this be grandfathered use, seeing that used to be the AMP grocery store, that whole building? I'm just...
The old Tudor package store. Can you remember it well?
Yeah, so I'm just wondering, wouldn't that be a grandfathered use at this point?
No, because that one was, I believe, was a Class III liquor permit for package store. This is Class IV for beer only.
But this was a grocery store. It was, that whole building was the AMP grocery store in Enfield at one time, and that was a long time ago. And it hadn't been abandoned, because obviously, that use hasn't been abandoned if we have another store, a grocery store, in there. So wouldn't it just be... I mean, they still have to come before us for the permit, but I'm just saying, wouldn't that be grandfathered, because there was a question about the distance from the church? I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, I believe this grocery store came before P&amp;Z for approval last year, or the year before, for the business?
I see the look on your face. You're like, that's never been a grocery... That whole building used to be one big grocery store in Enfield at one time.
Four years ago.
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably before you were born, Ben.
It is.
Okay.
If I make Commissioner DeGray, that used to be, almost everything was a grocery store, the old AMP grocery store, up until where Subway is now. Subway, the actual AMP Tudor package store there was separate. It wasn't, it might have been in the same building, but it was a separate operation.
But again, that goes back to the grandfather...
They weren't selling beer or wine or anything inside the grocery store itself.
Right.
But the question I have is, since that was originally granted a Class III liquor license for that location, excuse me, Class III, and now we're doing a Class IV, if I'm not mistaken, isn't the town only allowed so many Class III liquor licenses by state?
Yeah, that's for package stores only, that's for liquor, beer, wine.
So if we grant this Class IV to this, for this permit, does, now we get rid of the Class III as vacated, is that, give us another slot for somewhere else in town, I guess is my question? And I'm not sure quite how to word that question, but I think you're getting what I'm asking here.
To my knowledge, the prior Class III that was, that maybe may have been in that location is no longer valid, because the permutee is no longer in operation.
Okay, okay. And this doesn't count towards that allotment at all?
No, this is Class IV.
Class IV.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, it's quick, when Joey had Quick Lunch 2 over there, did he have beer and wine, Joey Knowles?
I don't remember.
I don't either. Remember he had Quick Lunch?
Yeah, I do.
Two?
I do. Yeah, I don't remember.
I don't remember either.
No.
I don't remember.
But is there any questions on this particular application? Is there a motion to... Nope. Is there anybody in the public who'd like to speak for or against this application? Anyone in the public who'd like to speak for or against this application? Seeing none, is there a motion to close this part of the public hearing and approve?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman DeGray, seconded by Commissioner Alamo, to motion to approve closing of public hearing. Is there, all those in favor? Is there any discussion on a motion around this application? Nope, seeing none. Secretary, call the roll. Whenever you're ready. Yeah, sorry, sorry, John.
Louis Fiore?
Four.
Linda DeGray?
Four.
Virginia Higley?
Four.
Francis Alamo?
Four.
Kieran Majmudar?
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky?
Four.
John Petronella is four.
Seeing that, the application is passed unanimously, seven-nothing. You're all set, sir? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good luck. Good luck with your store. Yeah, we made, yeah. Yeah, we closed, and we made a motion to approve again. No discussion.
I just didn't get to make the motion.
Oh. DeGray?
I made a motion to close the public hearing.
Yep, and Commissioner DeGray made a motion to approve, seconded by Commissioner Alamo.
Okay, we'll go with that.
We'll go with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. There's no old public hearings, so now we have new business site plan review with the secretary. Whenever you get a chance.
Yep. Site plan review number 1882, 25 Hazard Avenue. Site plan review for modifications to site plan Paramount Realty Services, Inc., owner, AAA Club Alliance, Inc., applicant, map 45, lot 8, BG Zone.
Take it, the applicant. Give us a second here. Take it, the applicant's here. Could you please identify yourself for the record, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Dave Ziyaks. I'm a professional engineer with FA Hesketh Associates. We're located over in East Granby.
Thank you.
And this is my first time here this year. A lot of new faces. But a few of the commission members know that I've been coming here since the mid-1980s, so it's nice to be back in person. We've been hiding for the last couple of years here. We're here this evening, we're over at the Enfield Commons, where the new AAA Service Center is being constructed right now. It's on the east side of the site. I brought along here our old master plan. This is Enfield Commons, and last year, we completed in the front there where the new Starbucks is and the Jersey Mike's is located, and then this is where the AAA is along Freshwater Boulevard. It's under construction. I'd say it's about 70% complete now. It's been going on longer than anticipated. A lot of it has to do with COVID-related issues. We're all tired of hearing that, but it's the reality of, you know, getting materials and things like that and contractors. So they're a little bit behind schedule, but they've been picking up speed lately. There's a flood compensation area that was constructed, where we tore out some old parking area in the back here. That's probably about 60, 70% done. It really needs some shaping up and some landscaping as we move forward into April and early May. And that, there was also improvements proposed on the very east side of what is now Home Sense. We were going to make some parking changes and some aisle changes there, and that was approved under site plan approval 1842, about a little over a year ago, the fall of, what would that have been, the fall of 2000. This is a site plan 1882, which is a modification of 1842. And when we came before the commission at the time, there was actually, you didn't know that, and we didn't present it that way, but there was actually two projects sort of merged in together. One that the owner had been planning for quite some time, which was the repaving and restriping of the oldest part of the lot, which is this whole area where AAA is being constructed. You know, so from Home Sense over to Freshwater Boulevard, that, I think most of that asphalt there dates back 30, 40 years. It's never really been touched, and after all the renovations that took place at Enfield Commons over the years, they always skipped over that area. So the owner was planning on repaving that, and then AAA came along, and so we merged the two together, just so we wouldn't have two site plans with a line sort of driving down the middle of them. And the intent was to finish everything at the same time. But what we're here for this evening is really two items. One is the, where we were proposing to make some parking changes along the side of Home Sense and add actually five parking spaces there and reorient that a bit. The current management and the tenants really don't want to do that, because, as it was expressed in a call not that long ago, some of the people were concerned at introducing... I'll show you, I'll move to the next slide here. This is the area I'm talking about. This is the wall of Home Sense. We were going to add in some additional parking along against the wall there and some sidewalk work, and as it turns out, the Home Sense tenant and the Altus tenant, they're not too excited about that after looking at it again, because they were worried about people potentially backing out and getting into conflict, because now, this parking lot here is being used by Home Sense in particular. Back over the years, that was pretty underutilized, but Home Sense is such a success that a lot of people here, particularly on the weekends, are parking, their customers are parking over here. So what we'd like to do is basically go back to what we had, which is return this, or keep this as the main fire lane, truck lane through this area here to the back of the store. And as it turns out, the fire marshal was never that excited about adding that, those parking spaces along the building. We kind of, Ms. Higley's is shaking her head, because she knows we went through this. We kind of negotiated and compromised or whatever to have sufficient fire lane there and the parking. So I think you've seen in his comments to you this evening is that he has no problem with the change we're making, and the conversations I've had with him, he's actually pleased that we're doing away with that parking along the building, because it forces him to work around, potentially park cars if he has to gain access to the side of that building for emergency purposes. So he's happy the parking's going away. So that's part of our application, is the reconfiguration of this area and the restriping of this area. One thing we're going to be doing is... Something that I've learned along the way, that I didn't know, is that we were always wondering why there's a bulge in the parking driveway here. It was like, well, why isn't this a consistent 30 feet through here? Why is there this sort of strange bulge? And the reason is, it's actually a bus stop. And I never realized it was a bus stop, but the, your local bus, your small bus that goes, I forget, what's the name of the local bus, the small bus that goes around?
Magic Bus?
Yeah, Magic Bus? Yeah, yeah. They actually have a stop there, and there's now a sign there. There's a bus stop sign for, I haven't seen a bus stop sign there in a long time, but there's one there now. So what we're going to do is stripe that area as a bus stop, and then introduce a new sidewalk, that so when you get off the bus, you're not in a landscaped island, you'll be able to walk down a sidewalk, which will tie into the walk that's right there, and then, you know, reestablish this crosswalk the proper way with a stop sign, stop bar, and paint that area. So if you get off the bus or get on the bus, you'll have a real designated area. I never really realized that there was a bus stop there. So in summary, this area here, we're going to keep the aisle the way it is, but restripe it the proper way with the proper signage for fire lanes, and then reestablish this bus stop, put a sidewalk here, and a new, obviously, fix the painted crosswalk the right way. The second item is, as our application is, what we want to do is introduce what I'm calling a phasing line, which is sort of right down the middle of the lot. And the main reason why we're doing that is because this was originally approved as one unified site plan. Staff is concerned about the issue that, you know, AAA is going to be looking for a certificate of occupancy, I'll say late April, maybe early May, at the rate they're going. And this portion of the work here is going to be done by owner management, not by AAA's contractor. And what the owner of the shopping center is doing is rolling this work in with other work that they want to do on the site, other, some other pavement that needs to be done, curb corrections, and then fixing up whatever damage has been done by winter snow plowing. You know, these are large shopping centers, every year, they have to go in and fix curbing and sidewalks and things like that, that have been damaged by the snowplows. So that's all going to get rolled into this work either later in the spring or in this summer, depending upon how the schedule goes and getting paving contractors. So what we'd like to do is introduce this phasing line here, so that everything east of that phasing line has to be completed, like you normally would for any site, so that AAA can get its certificate of occupancy. And that includes, you know, final paving, lane striping, everything, landscaping, that type of thing, and then I have to sign off on the plans as the final inspector, professional engineer inspector on the project. So that would allow staff to issue a certificate of occupancy for the AAA while this work is going on. Now, the whole project for erosion control and landscaping has been bonded, and we wouldn't propose to alter that. The bonds will stay in place until such time as this work that's shown on our new plan is completed, regardless of AAA's schedule. So the bonding would remain in place as a security for the town. And that's about it. The staff, I noticed online that their town engineer has updated his report, he has no concerns any longer. The police department, fire department, I think the building officials have all opined that they have no issues with the phasing. Again, as long as, you know, when they go to do the final inspections for the AAA, everything is there like you would in a normal fashion for any new use in town, all of the various life safety and public safety surrounding that building, so it properly operates, you know, in a safe and efficient manner. So basically, everything east of this line here, which is sort of the sawcut line for AAA's work right now, the site has been paved with binder course, but it's going to need a second, you know, the second finish course when the plant's open next month. And that area will be all striped the proper way, and again, landscaped and everything else. So I would ask for your approval of the two things, the change to the site plan along Home Sense, there's no change to the site plan for AAA, and then allow us to introduce this phasing line, so that, you know, staff is comfortable with issuing a CO for AAA while the owner completes their work. And that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. I just have one, and I'm going to leave up to you guys, and I'll come back with the last one. You mentioned...
Thank you.
Yep.
I got my mic on. You mentioned that there's actually no other changes to the site plan, but we have documentation here that says, caused for removal of two catch bases from the plunge pool area located in the north section of the site, a proposed change in the slope for the plunge pool, regrading of areas located around, we already talked about additional. So is there a change to the catch bases in the two plunge pools?
No. What that was is, staff was reviewing an earlier set of drawings. There was some confusion in the office as to what was the final plans recorded and everything, but I think we've straightened that out, though staff will speak for itself. But I think we straightened that out now, over the last few days, that that's not the case, that the latest set of plans doesn't have that.
Is that accurate?
Yeah, the plans that was basing the review off of were from a prior approval. The more updated set of plans that were located does show for that, those changes that were approved.
Go ahead, Commissioner Higley.
Do we have those plans in our packet? Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we were looking at the correct ones. Thank you.
So now I'll take a step back. Anyone else have some? Commissioner Petronella?
Yeah, I'm looking at a couple of emails that were sent by staff yesterday and I guess today, so, and I believe those are the ones referred to that address the comments, or the previous comments from the staff report. The engineer has, I guess, signed off on it and had said, after review of the subject site plan GR1, latest revision dated November 11th, 2020, along with the revised flood compensation calculations dated January 11th, 2021. I'm not sure if that's correct. The flood compensation comments have been addressed. So I'm assuming that engineering is all set. They've signed off, as well as the fire marshal, he had sent in some revised comments as well.
Yeah, those are the most up-to-date comments from those departments.
Right. Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that. I don't know if everybody saw the email. And basically, the, you're looking to phase it so that you can get a CO for the AAA, and then the owner of the property is going to be responsible for the second portion.
Right.
So you get a CO, and then there's no time limit, I guess, when the phase two needs to be done? Is there...
Well, it falls under the site plan time limit in general, but, you know, the intent is to wrap it up this summer.
Correct.
You're not responsible for it.
All right, and... And...
And the bonds will stay in place until the work's done.
The bonds for the whole project?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Bonds that are in place now, yes.
Right. Okay, so none of that's going to get released until...
Right.
The whole project's done? Okay. So you're not phase bonding or anything like that?
No, we're not asking for that, no.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Leary?
On the approval of the AAA, I'm going to call it your new line, was any of those parking spots required for the occupancy for AAA? Or you're going to be okay there?
Yeah, AAA, within that eastern line, there's more than sufficient parking for AAA. Yeah, to meet the zoning requirements, yes.
Okay, yeah, just wanted to get that out there because I don't think anybody just looked at parking again.
Right, yes.
But the parking is going to be okay with...
Right.
...the occupancy of AAA?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Montarde?
Yeah, hi. My comment is more in reference to the staff and the commission that this appears to be a recently approved site plan and this, prior to this point. And this modification, if anything, the way I understand it, is an improvement to the earlier approved site plan. If that's the case, would it have been easier for the staff to review it and for the commission to devise some means by which we could have the staff review and have the applicant go their own merry way to save some time as well as some effort in coming back for the review and approval again? So either way, I'm happy with it, but that was my comment, more for commission and for the staff. Thank you.
I don't think he has to come back.
No. Well, I guess it's my turn for questions. So the first question I have is on the engineering department report. I don't, I still don't see any response from engineering department about, I'm going to quote their comment, "From site inspection appears the gas service parallels the electric service change, so these changes are connected within the plaza site. The modified plans should reflect this change to the gas service location."
Yes.
Does the modified plans reflect...
No, in the last day, I haven't had a chance to do that. So I would leave that as a condition, if you will.
Or incomplete plan.
Yeah, those things are evolving literally every day because utilities are being hooked up literally every day.
Okay, but again, that needs to be done.
Yep.
Yes, did staff want to say something on that or...
No, engineering brought that up regarding the gas connection out to the northwest as opposed to going out to, out to Freshwater Boulevard, and it wasn't on the most recent plans shown.
The other question I have for you is on, knowing that area very well, I remember when Cranbrook was put in, which is a little bit to the east of where you're doing, but basically, I look at that whole thing as the Cranbrook area from all the way to Bedding Barn, all the way down to the back of that mall. As you and I both know, we have, or did certainly have, a severe water issue, and I noticed the size of what I want to call your retaining pond in the back is quite large.
Yes.
Which I'm really surprised at, you're able to even put the building on that site, to be quite frank with you. One of the things I did know, just from my own curiosity to staff, is, I'm just going to read because it saves me a lot of time, "The existing impervious coverage is over the maximum of 66%." I mean, so this building was approved by the last planning zone commission, knowing that it exceeded the allotment for what that size of that stamp should have taken? Okay, just to get it in the record, I just find that...
Well, remember, Mr. Chairman, this is built on top of old asphalt.
Right.
So there was no change. Matter of fact, the impervious coverage is better.
Right, that's how, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get it, I'm just...
Yeah, no, I understand.
Just wanted to make the point.
I understand.
And the other thing I want to mention, unless staff says something to the contrary, is that basically, staff's not advising us to phase this project in. And I'd be quite frank with you, I tend to agree with them that we should not phase this in. This is one of the same project that was approved by the last planning zone commission, which, as you made note, there are many new members, that we should keep this as one phase, not phase it in. And I would highly recommend to us that we don't deviate from that. There seems to be some confusion about who's doing what, so I would recommend to us that we don't phase this in, we keep this as one phase, all one project, not two. Another question I have for you is, I know you're familiar with the area. When I'm coming down from Ocean Job Lot or the other new store there in the corner here, when I'm coming down, so behind, we'd be behind the restaurants, I mean, there is a tremendous dip in that driveway, whatever you want to call it. It's not a public road, it's a private road, as you well know. Is anything being done about trying to relieve some pressure on that dip?
Yeah, the management is reviewing that, you know, as part of the ongoing improvements as to what can be done with that. That's what I understand.
So it's not in these plans?
It's not in these plans, no.
So that would be up, okay?
Yeah. Now, there's several things that are on their list. You know, they're not new owners, but they're relatively new owners, so they've got a list.
Yep. But that was not including the original plans for the improvement of this area with AAA and what the other owners doing on the side?
Right, that's correct.
That ends all of my discussion. Is there any other questions? Commissioner DeGray?
I just have one, and you probably don't know the answer to this. The timeline, if we were to approve this phasing, to do the other part of the parking lot, do they have any idea?
It's definitely this summer.
Yeah, but I'm thinking, okay, you've got a contractor there who's paving one portion. It wouldn't take much more to just keep right on going. And again, I hear what you're saying, but the idea is that parking lot is pretty full most of the time over there, and to relieve a lot of the stress would be to do it all at once, in my opinion. Just get it done, one big mess and over, instead of trying to piecemeal it. Because now, I have a concern for AAA that the people that are currently parking alongside of HomeGoods is going to start migrating over to AAA to park, and then you're going to have AAA being upset that their customers aren't going to...
Well, there's always going to be logistics involved. You can't do that large area all at the same time.
I understand, but that's a concern that I have, is the disruption of breaking it up to two different times, you know?
Well, all I can say to you folks is that it's, you know, the AAA is going to be ready to open, and you're going to be putting it in a bit of a hardship if it has to sit there with an empty building for however long another month, two, couple of months goes by while the owners are doing their thing. Again, we only brought, we only brought the application here as together because it seemed like it was convenient and not have two separate site plans and things like that. So, but time, things happen. You know, COVID has done a lot of damage to a lot of different things and the way people are thinking and paying for things and things of that nature. That's why, I mean, these shopping centers are constantly in flux. There's constantly things being added and deleted and whatever on all of your shopping centers. And I've been, I must admit, I'm involved in a lot of them. So I understand your point of view to a certain extent, but from just thinking in terms of, we're bringing in new tenant into town, they're going to be ready to go, and they don't need the parking next to HomeSense.
I understand.
Just like they don't need the work that'll be done over in front of...
Excuse me, we're not bringing in a new tenant into town. That tenant's already here.
You know...
That tenant's already here.
I understand that, but...
Okay, thank you.
I'm not going to argue with the commission at all. I'm just saying that there's...
Just wanted to make the point.
Right.
So, Mr. Chairman, so in the discussions with staff and the engineering, so they do close with their comments recommending not to do this to us. So did you have discussions?
We haven't had the latest discussion today. Your other staff members, such as your police and fire department, have indicated they have no problem with the phasing. So I don't, maybe have a conversation with your planning staff right now and see if...
Well, that's what I'm wondering, if they have any updates or is there anything new since this has been written? Any new information that we could use or is this final?
I mean, the only new information I would have would be the updated plans, but there's still the modifications on the western portion of the site that are proposed that would need to be modified. But as far as the, you know, the area, the detention area, that was already approved in this January 11, 2021 plans.
So I was on the last commission when we did this, and I remember you brought out the improvement to the whole mall. What you were doing here was going to improve the runoff, the drainage...
Yes.
Away from this particular site. Can you just, if you remember, did I remember a discussion about that?
Well, yeah.
We talked about this a lot.
Yeah, I mean, the...
In your initial application.
Right. I mean, the flood compensation area that is part of the AAA project is a big enhancement to the center, only in the fact that you're, we've taken away a lot of old asphalt that nobody ever parked on, and it just sheet run off into the, into the brook with no water quality improvements or anything to it or treatment to it. All of the AAA site drains into that now. It's going to be naturally treated, you know, and the water quality over time, it's a small part of the freshwater brook watershed, but it's a good start. And I know your wetlands commission was very excited about the opportunity to put in this flood storage area because it's going to become a very natural area. You know, it's going to enhance habitat along the watershed and things of that nature. So, yeah, there's a lot of positives indirect to this application. And, you know, we went through a full wetlands application process and everything, and they were quite pleased with the improvements.
So what you're saying, AAA could be approved possibly a couple of months before this other work can get done?
That's the concern, yes.
Is there any way that they can join contractors and get it all done at one time? I mean, I don't understand, you know, the weather is here now, it's the time of the year. Is there any way that they can just do it all at once?
I've been told there's just issues that are going to make that difficult, and that's the only reason why I made the application. And staff, we've discussed this with staff, and they've indicated that, you know, they really would not be in a position to issue a CO to AAA unless the commission modified the site plan.
And you're talking a couple of months difference, you're saying. AAA's going to sit there, finished?
Staff, yes.
Staff?
Staff, let it respond.
Yes, please.
You don't mind, Commissioner O'Leary?
No, please, I'd love to hear some, trying to get my arms around this.
If I can make, add some clarity to this. Back in March 30th of 2021, we had the pre-construction meeting. And at that time, I learned that, at the meeting, that they did not have any intention to do, the construction company did not have any intention to do that section of the work on the west side that we're speaking of now.
Yep.
Emails went back and forth between Paramount, who's the owner, and representatives from MVP, who I guess are the management company, and AAA. And the response on March 31st from Eric Kelly from Paramount was, "I will send a letter to Rick at the infield and advise him that we are not adding parking along the side of the building, and the work associated with the scope will be removed from the plans." So it doesn't appear to have, it doesn't appear that they had any intent to do any of this work on that portion of the approved plans. So that's where we have a bit of an issue because the project was approved as a whole.
Right, right. And that just sounds like there's no guarantee it's going to get done, or what you're saying.
Correct.
Yeah, that, so, I got it now. Thank you. Thank you for...
Commissioner Linsky?
Yeah, I just have some questions.
Okay, your mic's not on.
Oh. There we go. How's that? Yeah, so could you elaborate on your objection to the having the phased-in process? Is that basically the objection that you have, that it was not part of the original plan, and this was something that was added later, and there was no intent to do it?
The plans were to approve, improve the whole site under the original approval.
Okay.
And that included the, that portion on the western side that we're discussing now.
Okay.
Normally, when a project's approved and they come in for a CO, it's at the time the project's completed. I mean, that's normally what happens with every project.
Okay, so it all gets done at once?
Correct. And now the phasing in, there's no guarantee that that will ever get done. So, and that's kind of my issue with signing off on any kind of CO for just a portion of the building where they're obviously getting income from that newly sea, and they're not going to get any income from doing a parking lot over. So that's kind of the issue. There's no guarantee to get that portion of the project completed.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Petronella?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The guarantee that the work will get done is in a form, you said it's bonded, right? Are the site improvements bonded?
No.
No?
I'm looking at the bonding right now, and it's just erosion control and landscaping.
Mm-hmm, right.
So there's no guarantee that the pavement's going to get done.
Correct, yeah. Because we got rid of the site improvement bonds before this project came about. And we typically, an applicant would come in and would, on the original application, would apply for a phased project, phased bonding, or phased construction and so forth. They didn't for this particular project, and there lies the issue. So the applicants coming in for an amendment to a previously approved application to do phasing. I understand the hardship. The AAA has no control over who the mall owner is that's doing the work, I guess, and it's a separate entity, a separate contractor and so forth. And I tend to approve or support this application only because being in the business, I know how this stuff kind of works, and it was kind of a mishap that it should have been phased construction, phased bonding and so forth. But I think that there should be a time limit or timeframe where the second phase would be completed by, whether it's six months after the CO or something that we can decide, but that's how I would propose to go about supporting this. Thank you.
Well, the question I have for you, Commissioner Petronella, is if we went along with your thought process, what is the ramifications? If we put a time limit on it, what would the ramifications be? There is no ramifications. How are we enforcing it? Are we going to throw AAA out of the building? So the problem is, they came in on their own as one plan. These are paid professionals, they prevented a plan, it's one plan when they probably should have done two plans, two phases, don't get me wrong, but they chose to do that. And now they're asking us to do a phased approach, and we have no guarantee that Phase Two, however, or the West Phase is going to get done in a timely manner that the town would like to see. So I understand where you're coming from, but I regretfully say, actually, I just, I don't agree with your analysis at this point since the burden clearly is on them. So if there was no other discussion, yep?
Mr. Chairman, may I just make one statement?
I think the application, yep.
Yeah, just, great. I mean, one of the mechanisms you could put in place, it's a unique situation where we are where we are, is why don't you require a bond for that work by a price established by your town engineer and have them put a bond in to guarantee that the work will be done for that west side? I realize it's a little unique, but we are where we are tonight, and...
But there's no application. How do you put a bond on it?
There is an application. Bond the west side work.
So are you, are you representing them too? The mall owner?
Yeah, there are plans, it's our application. It's, there's only one application.
Okay.
But then, again, they get extensions and extensions. So again, we could do the bond, but, you know, it won't cover it. They get five years automatically. So again...
Mr. Chairman, all I can say is...
But thank you for the idea. No, I appreciate it.
That's all I can, I can only offer.
No, sorry.
The other follow-up piece I had, so if we approved that plan, now there's changes, which you said the fire marshal is happy, and I'm glad he's happy, but it's a different plan.
Yeah, but that, you're going to approve, it sounds like you're going to approve the site plan anyhow, you're just not going to approve it with phasing.
But then you can't change it. You still have to have the parking spaces that you, we approved and the truck lane?
No, that's what, we're asking you to change the layout. There's two parts to this application.
There's two parts.
Right, so parts.
So you can remove one part and not the other?
Yes, we can. Yeah, the question, the answer is, yes, we can.
Okay.
The answer is, yes, we can. The answer is, yes, we can.
We're changing the site plan.
Right. The answer is, yes, we can.
Definitely want to change the site plan.
Right.
I'm only arguing the phasing.
Can we get an opinion from staff on that bonding question? Since we have an application that we're cutting in half?
Yeah, so...
No, we're not cutting in half. Yeah, they're asking to...
They're asking us, right.
Yes.
Potentially cutting in.
Very good, thank you.
No, this is, this is a site plan, and it's not a special permit, and we did do away with our site restoration bonds. Um, you know, my concern is, I, I mean, I guess we probably could do the bonding for the asphalt, but, um, we've got no guarantee that it's going, I mean, we, we have nothing in writing that says that the owners are going to do this, and that's my concern. I understand the, the desire for it. I do think that the site plan modifications should, should be approved, I, I agree with that. I'm not sure how, how proper it is to require the asphalt bonding.
Can we table this till our next meeting and get the proper documentation from the owners and bonding and whatever else we need to make the town safe and make, make sure this work's going to get done? Is that a possibility? Before we just all out and say no tonight?
Of course, it's a possibility.
I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but-
Does, does anyone feel the need?
I just, kind of funny seeing the building ready for two months.
Yeah, let me, does anyone feel the need? Is there a majority of people who feel the need to explore the bond option that the applicant has mentioned to table this? Or are we ready to?
I have, I have one other question, I'd like to get in.
Sure, absolutely.
Probably for staff, uh, what about if, if a TCO is issued, Rick, what's the, uh, what basically, what a TCO, is, is there a certain amount of time that has to go by before they get the, the permit? So there's, there's no leverage there?
There's, there's no leverage there, it's just, it, it's basically a CO, and they can go in and, and do what they want to do at AAA and doesn't guarantee any-
A TCO can't be stipulated with conditions on it where-
No.
Usually, that's why you get a TCO, because there's something not fully completed or not quite there.
We don't normally do that, though.
Okay.
It had, we haven't done it in the past, I can't remember when it was done, except for one time, and that was with the high school.
Mm-hmm.
And, and that's the only time that I can remember something like that.
All right.
The other, I think Ben had a, a point too on something.
Yeah, the only other thing is, um, a final as-built survey is required for, prior to signing off on a CO, so, I mean, how, I don't know how we'd get a final as-built survey if half of the project is still under construction.
Right. Thank you, good point. Commissioner Maggiore?
Yeah, I think my question is first to the staff and then to the applicant. Let's assume that the applicant is willing to come back with a statement that says, we will complete Phase One or the easterly side within whatever number of months, more or less, and then Phase Two, the westerly side, within so many more months thereafter. Is that something that the staff feels is sort of kosher, number one? And number two, the applicant, would the applicant be willing to come back and make that kind of a statement? This hopefully would alleviate some of the other issues as to additional bonding, uh, there of course will be some bonding, and major issue that the commission has that, when are you going to complete the second phase? First the staff, then the applicant?
Yeah, I just take a second.
Are you all set? You, are you guys all set? John, are you all set?
I just wanted to add one more thing to the question I asked. Yeah, I just didn't finish.
Yeah. No problem. All set? Okay.
Uh, I guess, if I can answer that, uh, I guess we could take some bond, uh, bond application in for that amount of pavement that would be determined by engineer, but we'd like to have some sort of stipulation from the actual property owner that the phased-in work to the west side would be completed in a, a certain period of time, maybe at the commission's choosing, six months maybe, as long as we get that issue of, of, uh, the paving in that portion of the original approved site plan under the special use permit approved.
Well, correct, that's kind of what I asked, right? Before, about having a letter from the owner and-
Wait, hold on, Commissioner Maggiore had the, has the floor. And then Commissioner Higley had a question.
Right, so apparently the staff seems to be in favor that if the applicant comes back and says, within four months, five, whatever, time limit, then it would be acceptable, and that relieves the commission of the anxiety that, hey, this will never get done, or it'll get done at some time, who knows when.
Is that a fair representation or not?
Well, kind of, but I think we need a commitment on that part, on the part of the property owner, that it will be done in a certain period of time determined by this commission.
It's not the property owner, that's the applicant, it's AAA.
The property owner signed off on the original special use permit so they could come forward-
Okay.
-for this project.
If that's possible, that would make it a lot easier on this guy.
I, I will strongly take the message back.
Wonderful, thank you.
And strong arm him. Because if they, if we really need this phasing, then obviously we have to do what we need to do.
I have a concern about the bond. If we ask for a bond from the property owner and we get it, and we say, okay, the work has to be done in next amount of months, right? And the work doesn't get done, they can come back for extensions, or if the town pulls the bond, which is very rare, the money won't have, you know, the town doesn't have a staff to do that, to finish the project. So it's kind of like a big thing. We're not just talking the bond, we're talking about follow-through.
That's true, but they're also in violation of the special use permit and the approvals.
Correct.
So if enforcement action has to be taken, we go through the route of normal enforcement for not following through on the special use permit approval.
And Ms. Higley, I think you're going to have some assurance here, these, this is a major player, and they're going to be back here for other things quickly, so you'll, you'll, you'll see probably me again with something new soon, so, uh-
I know, but we're talking about this-
No, I understand, but I mean, there, you have to have a little bit of faith in the fact that this is a major play, this isn't some owner that's going to disappear.
I'm hesitant till all the questions are answered, to my satisfaction, to be a positive outcome.
I absolutely understand.
Okay.
So what I wanted to add to my suggestion about what we're talking about now, about the bonding and, and the owner giving us an affidavit, I would also like to add that before our next meeting, that, that paperwork goes through the town attorney's office, just to make sure it's legal and we have the enforcement, and somehow figure out the amount of the bond. Like Commissioner Higley was saying, if the town has to go out and hire a private contractor, let's be sure that we have enough bond to go ahead and do that. But again, just to end my question, have it go through the town attorney's office to us, if everybody's willing to table it. Till next meeting.
I just have one other comment to add, if I can, since you're going back to the, to the owners and the applicant, we, we are concerned about, what I want to call the big dip.
The big dip.
Thank you. I don't know what else best, I don't know what else best, it's been there for many years, so they probably inherited it, but don't get me wrong, it's the big dip.
I understand.
So we'd like to see that addressed.
I've been fighting the big dip for a long time, to be honest with you.
Yeah, yes, I do slow down, but he still, it's pretty, pretty, pretty noticeable. Seeing that there is no consensus at this point, there's other things that the applicant and staff are going to explore, whether, you know, whether we support that or not, we still don't know at this point. There seems to be a consensus here to table this for the next meeting, so I will entertain a motion made by Commissioner Maggiore to table, seconded by Secretary Petronella. All those in favor of tabling this item to the next meeting?
Aye.
A unanimous vote to table this for the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the spirit of cooperation will, will hopefully succeed.
You've got some homework.
Yeah.
I always do, that's-
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, I don't want to lose my spot here. All right, I think we're on to Site Plan Review 1884. The secretary, please read Site Plan Review 1884, please.
Uh, Site Plan Review Number 1884, 1559 King Street. Site Plan Review for Modifications to Site Plan Baker Properties Limited Partnership, Owner/Applicant MAP 17, Lot 39, STD Zone.
Thank you. The applicant is represented as well, they are coming forward? Yep.
We're coming up.
Yeah, no problem, take your time.
Just wheeling chairs, Mr. Chairman.
It's all right.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, um, I am Attorney Paul W. Smith of Smith &amp; Bishop LLC, 27 South Main Street, Windsor Locks, Connecticut. I represent the applicant, which is Baker Properties. To my right is Paul Vitaliano, who's with the, oh, is he in the back? In the back. They're moving around on me. I have Baker's people here also, so Paul is here with us as the engineer, and Don DeLuthier, and Oliver from Baker Properties. It's a fairly simple application, but I, and it's a modification of a special use permit that we got approved back in 2019. Just for new commission members, especially as an overview, this is the old Bernice property on King Street, constructed back in 1970 originally, it's gone through a lot of iterations. Baker Properties has owned it since about 10 years now, I believe, 2012. It's an 18-acre parcel, 184,000 square feet of warehouse space. They currently have, I think, everything but about 43,000 square feet rented. We came to you in 2019 anticipating, we were, they were talking to lease, to potential tenants, and every tenant they had talked to really wanted some adjustment to the building, mainly with regard, if you see it on the screen, the overhead doors. So, um, we have finally, they've finally reached an accommodation with a tenant who wants to go in, but they don't need the four overhead doors. As you can see from the change on the plan, what they're looking for is two regular-style overhead doors and one overhead door where you basically can drive right into the building. So it's a really minor change. What it actually does do is it, it does not, we don't have to eliminate the handicap, existing handicap ramp and go with a, with a lift, we can just leave the handicap ramp in place. We also aren't moving the, the exit, the emergency exit door that's there. So it's a pretty simple change, there's really nothing else being done, I believe, of any significance. We do have a, a tenant, like I said, it's, uh, it's the type of use this, this building is designed for, which is basically a commercial use. So happy to have any of, any of the people here ask, answer any questions you have, but it's, it's fairly straightforward, and we've always enjoyed working with the town and, and staff in terms of getting this done. I, I will say, as an aside, I've represented Baker for a number of years now, been to the site many times, it's well-maintained, the building's well-maintained, their tenants really are, are very quiet kind of tenants, commercial tenants, industrial-style tenants, and, like I said, the property's well-maintained, the, the tenants seem to be really responsible in terms of how they occupy the property. So it's, I think the, the client has been a, a good corporate citizen for Enfield, so, and, and this is, over the years, has been a tough property in some ways. So kudos to them for, for making it really a, a good economic, um, property.
Thank you. Any, any questions for the, to the applicant? Any questions for the Commissioner DeGray?
Um, just the one comment, and it's probably to the staff more than the applicant. Fire department wanted to know the intended use of the drive-in bay and may require a sprinkler system modification, did, was that a-
That's correct. That will be looked at during the building permit process.
Okay. I'm just wondering if, you know, that was discussed and what the issue was. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Alimo?
That was my question, fire department issue.
Yeah.
Is there any other questions? Commissioner Maggiore?
Yeah, I think I'm going back to the same issue as before, that this being a fairly minor adjustment, we should be able to have the staff review, handle it, so maybe the commission can review the regulations, change whatever needs to be done, you know, to make it a little bit easier for everybody. Thank you.
We are, we are doing a regulation review, and that'll be coming up probably sometime in the summer, probably, so we will, we, thank you, it's on the record. Any other questions?
We, we had a lot of debate over that.
Yeah. Is there any, staff comments on this particular application you'd like to add? Seeing none, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Site Plan Review Number 1884, uh, in, in conformance with staff's recommendations dated March 10th, 2022, with the attached 26 conditions.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Secretary Petronella, seconded by Commissioner Alimos, or any discussion on, on this application at this point to approve? Seeing none, will the secretary please call the roll, when he gets the opportunity?
Yes, uh, Lufiari?
Four.
Linda DeGray?
Four.
Virginia Higley?
Four.
Francis Alimo?
Four.
Kieran Maggiore?
Four.
Kenneth Helinski?
Four.
John Petronella is four.
Seeing, the record showed it was unanimous, seven, nothing decision, thank you very much, gentlemen, good luck with the building.
Thank you, members of the commission, thank you, Mr. Chairman, sir.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Nice to see you. We always just talk on the phone, so you couldn't, what was going on here?
Okay, moving on to the next item, item C, it's an 824 referral, I'm not sure, I guess, um, yes, formalities, the resolution regarding referral to planning zoning per Connecticut general statutes 8-24, discontinuous of portion of Old Neelands Road, which I think some of you know where it is, I know I do, it's a paper road. Staff, do we have to vote on this? I think the council already did it by resolution, do we have to vote on this?
We have to vote to send it to the council.
We do? Okay. Is there any discussion on releasing this paper road, getting rid, I guess, actually wiping off this paper road off the map? Any discussion? Is there a motion made to accept this referral?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley, seconded by Vice Commissioner Alimo. Any discussion? None? Secretary, please call a roll that we, I don't know, proper word, accept this referral, I guess, for the wipeout of this-
I guess we tell the council to go ahead.
So actually, what you're doing is sending a, a positive referral to the town council to move forward with this project.
Okay. Just call, roll, we need to roll, okay.
Louis Fiore?
Yes.
Linda DeGray?
Yes.
Virginia Higley?
Four.
Francis Alimo?
Four.
Kieran Maggiore?
Four.
John Petronella is four.
The record shows unanimous.
I'm sorry, Kenneth Helinski.
Four.
There you go.
Sorry about that.
But the record shows unanimous, seven, seven, nothing. So now, any old business, seeing none, other business, discussion on cannabis. And actually, we have a, someone who's volunteered to actually join us tonight, who's been doing a lot of information on that, Councilman Santinella, would please feel free to come on up and identify yourself for the record.
Good thing this is on the computer, because where type is small. They can't see it.
Good evening, John Santinella, 1204 Enfield Street. I am currently serving as the District Two Representative on the Town Council. And, Mr. Chairman, before we start, I just want to clarify for the record, as there is a boundary between elected officials on the Town Council and members of land use boards, that I am not here advocating for a position of any active applicant before the Planning and Zoning Commission. I am here merely as a representative of the council. I have been working with you on the cannabis ordinances, and I'm here just to answer questions or be a resource to the extent that I am able to do that.
Thank you, and just to remind everyone, because I know a couple commissioners weren't here, on our invitation, we asked Councilman Santinella to come here, because he's done a lot of research on this, so, again, we felt that was appropriate, wasn't any other thing other than help us get through this last part of the engagement. I'm sorry, Councilman Santinella, I don't think you probably have this in front of you.
Mr. Chairman, one of the things that, that I did notice, because I did listen to your last meeting when you had a discussion about the cannabis ordinances, and one of the recurring questions that I heard coming from you were issues related to why Thompsonville versus the rest of Enfield, and why that was, why you were considering a different set of parameters for that neighborhood. One of the, and by the way, staff, if I'm, like, speaking out of turn, please correct me, because I'm not an expert on this, so, to the extent that-
Not anybody.
So, to the extent that, okay, I know, we're all trying to learn, but I also don't want to go astray for anybody. One of the unique opportunities that we have here in Enfield is that we have a, what is classified as a disproportionately affected area. And that area impacts the Thompsonville neighborhood. It is a census tract that goes from the corner of Pearl Street and Franklin, down Pearl Street, over to Alden Avenue, on, down Route 5, and every, that neighborhood to the west. In the first round of applications, disproportionately affected areas have the first preference. So, as a potential applicant coming to Enfield, looking to establish a business here, they have preference if they are in a disproportionately affected area. For better or for worse, that confines us to that parcel, those couple miles of land. And that's why it is important that if we want to be able to entertain an applicant in this first round, that we be able to accommodate them in that neighborhood. If they're, and we are only going to get one dispensary, right? So just to be absolutely clear, the way the law is written now, we don't anticipate having 50 of these, right? There is one opportunity. And so, the benefit of being in the first round is that you have the first mover advantage, right? You have the business that's open the longest, the, the business that's open the longest has the best opportunity for success, and so on and so forth. And that's why that particular neighborhood is of importance and is a different focus than Enfield as a whole. Because if a, if an applicant wanted to come and put something at the mall, as has been suggested many times over, well, that's all well and good, but that would not fit into the first round process, right? So that would have to wait until some other time, and we then open that up with the rest of the surrounding area.
Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. And it also goes for production or cultivating facilities also, correct?
It also goes for a cultivating facility. And I believe that, at the moment, the size of a cultivating facility is limited to, I want to say 10,000 square feet, with a potential of being extended up to 25,000 square feet at some point in the future. So, you know, we're not talking about massive buildings, right? So there are opportunities for those-sized facilities in, in that neighborhood.
Thank you. Which kind of leads me to, kind of leads me to the latest that, that staff was giving us, if you had a chance to review this.
So we have right now.
Okay, yeah. I think we've made note of that, because basically, we're down to, other than, from schools and, and other dispensaries or culting, we're down to 100 feet in, in the T-Ville section, which I think is appropriate. That gives us some flexibility in T-Ville versus what we're looking at in the other part was 1,000 feet in the other areas. So I think we might have, if people are agreeable at this point, I think we might have addressed that T-Ville by the 100 feet mark. The question I have is, when I'm looking at the draft, staff was so nice to put together, I know you put a lot of work in it, so thank you very much. And I want to, I want to get back to the cultivating part if I can, because when I read the applicable zones, and the proposal, and it's nice enough to put together for us to discuss still, you say marijuana establishments as defined in the above Section B shall be limited to I-1, I-2, IP, and BR zones. Well, if we limit to that, that really means that a cultivator cannot go into any of the R-88 areas, or, to me, I know that's residential, but I keep thinking a lot of that is agricultural. I know we don't have an agricultural zone. But basically that, basically, we read that, that does not include the cultivator being able to go into any R-88 zone, which is agricultural, which I would like to see added here, because we basically do have feet defined from residential, from a buffer. So it's not like the residents who in the R-88 zones aren't protected, because we go on to production facilities or even dispensing, not that we allow dispensing out there, but it says, you know, 200 feet of residentially-owned property, once the 100 feet of containing residential use. So there is a buffer. So I would like to see applicable zones, basically R-88 be included, and actually, all I's and all B's. And I'm not, yeah.
Would you, do you want to limit it to just R-88 on public water and sewer?
Yeah.
I don't think any of the R-88 is on public.
It's not.
Water, probably.
Very few, very few out there. And I think we all know what the R-88 is.
I'm just tossing, just tossing.
It's out in the town farm, Abbey Road, Bra Brook Road, the areas, basically, where all the R-88 is. But I guess my other, my other question, just to throw out here, is, you know, why wouldn't we have included all the I zones in business zones? I mean, why, I'm just, no, not all the I's, with this I-1, I-2, and IP, and, that's all, okay. Okay, well, I'm looking, and the BR does include all the business zones, the way you have it written?
No, it's just the BR zone, which is, I did put a presentation up there when, I can show you guys in a little bit, but it's just the business regional zones.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Would you like to, would like to see Ben put up his presentation?
Is there a present, have some questions for the councilman? Or you want to do the?
Yeah.
I don't want to force you off, please, if you have questions.
No, he's, he's actually here to answer another question.
I'm happy for the duration.
Yeah.
So, tell me about that recognition, again, piece of the Thompsonville recognition.
Yes. So it is, class, I believe it is a disproportionately affected area, or disproportionately affected zone. You can go on to, if you were to Google Connecticut cannabis disproportionately affected zones, it puts up a map of the entire state, and it identifies for you the blue areas where those, they are. I had forwarded this on to you, Mr. Chairman.
It was in your packet, yes.
It was in their packet, okay. And so that blue area, I don't know if your packet is color or black and white, but that shaded area.
We save money on ink, counselor.
Good job, good job.
Good, we'll think about that when it's budget time.
We have to have, we have to have some fun.
You know something? It's great to be on this side of the. So, so that is the area where, that is given first priority in this first round. Now, those are the areas, as I understand what a disproportionately affected area is defined as, is it is an area that has been historically adversely impacted by drug, either activity, or residents have had some sort of disproportionate impact by, and I don't want to say drug, I don't really understand what, I don't really know the full definition.
My question is, so can that demographic just be used in that area, or does that demographic get used for the whole community?
It is not.
Does it make it subject just to that area?
It does make, it is in this.
I know when you do grant work, you can take everything and put it into the demographic.
As I understand it, in this first round opportunity, you are literally limited to those shaded areas. And then, beyond that, if there's nobody that, you know, applies to be in that area, no takers, right? In the next round, as this opens up, Enfield would then have an opportunity to put that one dispensary probably elsewhere in the community, right? So it is, again, it is back to that, do we participate? If we want to participate in this first round, we need to have an accommodation or an opportunity for somebody to potentially go in that neighborhood.
So if we use that designation with everything else we're doing, the TIF, everything that's been done, the new parks, all the amenities that are going on in Thompsonville, does that designation blanket, like, any kind of use? So, for example, we're going to tear down the La Mania and the theater, and we're going to be looking for private money to develop that property. So if they come to the bank and the bank goes, "Well, you're in a, that area, and we're not going to loan any money to you," does it hurt any other efforts we're doing, having that designation?
No, sir. I believe that, Commissioner, that this is specifically for this initiative, for, just for cannabis licensing. It is not a global designation for that area.
For that area, correct. And that's important, because everything that we've been doing and doing.
Yes.
We don't want, we don't want to hurt that.
Correct.
The riverfront, the train stop, I mean, everything.
Absolutely. And, you know, what I would ask you to just think and consider is that potentially, there is a operation that is bringing, as you have seen, high-paying, retail, heavy investment, foot traffic to a neighborhood that needs it. That can vary quickly, and you were part of the tour, you've seen the neighborhood and some of the transformation that was going on in that region, what that can do, and ultimately, maybe it's never considered a disproportionately affected area again.
So, and that's why I was asking about the designation spreading, because on our, on our little road trip that we had, which was very informative, I got a lot out of it, they suggested that we go like into a commercial area with a large space because of the business that's done and the parking that's needed. So that's why I was wondering if we use that, does that demographic help us if we went, you know, a mile up the road underneath 91?
Sure.
You know, because Thompsonville, to me, goes out there too.
Yep.
So I, you know what I'm saying?
Yep. So a couple things, Commissioner. So I am trying very hard to filter the information that we get from individuals that we talk to, because I always feel that they may have their own agenda, right? I, I kind of go by what I have seen. And the tour that you and I took was a dispensary in Holyoke, and we were probably three miles off the beaten path, right, in a neighborhood that was dilapidated, mill buildings.
Like an old mill area, like down here. It was almost the same.
Very reminiscent of the, the neighborhood that we are talking about.
Right.
And so, we saw a facility that was incredibly successful, in spite of all of the barriers, which were then sort of represented to you as barriers, right? I, so I, I'm trying to filter through that, because others have a different perspective that the first mover opportunity is what is ultimately more valuable. And considering we are only going to have one.
For the whole town.
For the whole town, that as long as it's not impossible to get to, and there's absolutely no parking, that we can have a successful dispensary or growing operation in that neighborhood. And I think that there are, I know that there are others out there who look to neighborhoods that are most troubled, as part of their mission is to gentrify and help rebuild those communities. And so, while some people are saying, "No, it has to be on the main road by the exit," others are saying, "We can be equally successful in a different location with a different cause and a different purpose." So that ultimately comes down to the business owners and their plan. And I think when we get to that point, we would really need to be careful to fully vet who is coming here and understand their motives. And so, while I hear you, I, I also have seen and heard from others who have very different experiences and feel that they can be equally as opportunistic in a neighborhood like Thompsonville.
I was just basing it on their success story and what they were telling us about.
Correct.
Their points they were giving us.
Yes. And in context, they, they indicated that they were doing roughly $30,000 per day.
I was shocked.
Which is an amazing business, right? And in an area that, as I said, was in an area where you wouldn't necessarily find mainstream retail.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Holinsky?
Yeah, I have a question, Councilman. I'm not sure you're, you're the right guy to answer it, but I'm trying to wrap my head around the degree of advantage we get by reducing to 100 feet from 1,000 feet, from public buildings, parks, and things like that for the Thompsonville area. What advantage does that really give us?
I'm not sure that I'm the right guy to answer that question either.
I said that.
I can.
Sure. Other than, okay, go ahead.
I can.
Okay, so.
I'm going to give, I used just two examples last time. And I'll, and again, I have no idea whether, you know, whether these buildings are going to be used, but I'll give you a perfect example. One is, let's, let's say someone wanted to come in, either do a cultivation or dispensary in the old Grants, old Tea Center, old Ann Bakery building. If we went by our regulations of, of 1,000 feet, that's too close to St. Pat's. So that would rule out that building from ever being used. That's why we asked for the 100 feet. Same token, say someone wanted to do a dispensary right here in the white building here in the corner, right here, the vacant building's been there for what, 20 years vacant since the?
Yeah, the furniture, please.
Well, unless you had 100 feet, you wouldn't be able to, because it's too close to public building and too, and the green is classified as a park. So that's, those are two examples, and I have no indication anyone's looking at those properties, I just want to use those as an example. That's why we asked for less feet in Thompsonville, because if we didn't, it really severely limits the ability to, for us to have anything in this, in the zone. And as Councilman Santinella has said, with the first and second drawings here in Connecticut, distressed areas are what we're looking at before it branches out into the mall areas of the, we wouldn't even classify for that in the first one. So it's strictly Thompsonville that allows us to have that, because it's a distressed area.
So it maximizes the opportunity.
Maximizes the opportunity, very, very well put. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have a question on the, on the regulation. So I thought we were all in the consensus that we were going to model the package store licensing relative to distancing.
We did, except for T-Ville.
Right, but see, I didn't remember that part.
Except for T-Ville. We had a big discussion with, then, about lessening T-Ville, because it would minimize or eliminate the ability to be able to do anything. So if you look at the.
I understand perfectly what you're saying, but that's why I mentioned to you, we had to take into effect even St. Nicholas's church, you know?
Yeah, yeah, all of them.
But so, do we really, do we want to do that in Thompsonville with the churches? I mean, do we want to do that, or do we want to stick with the 1,000 feet, like?
Again, if we stick with 1,000 feet, you, you might as well say you're not.
Well, you're knocking pearls, sweetheart.
You're, you're just, you're saying that's it. I mean, basically, you're almost saying that's it. It severely limits.
No, let's just think about the church places of worship. We've got St. Pat's.
St. Albert's.
St. Albert's. Now we have a new church too, right next to the.
Pleasant Street?
Right, there's another one too, right next to, Diane's, the old building, right there. There's a new church, we just approved that.
Right.
That's another church.
So again, that's why we went with the 100 feet. Because if you're not willing to go in 100 feet in T-Ville, we might as well say, right here's a commission, we're not probably going to allow any of this in T-Ville.
All right. So did we have a consensus of that? Because I might have missed.
I thought we did. That's why Ben, that's why Ben wrote it up this way.
Because I know we, we first wanted to mirror the package stores than, which we did for the rest of the.
Yeah, we did, rest of the community. Matter of fact, we added the 1,500 feet for schools, and we kept that in for T-Ville.
Right.
Nothing was going to go down by St. Joe's.
But yes, and, and then we have, we reduced in T-Ville, we reduced the distance from parks too, I believe, right?
Yes, 100 feet.
Yeah, but not the schools.
Not the schools.
Not the schools, but the parks and places of worship.
Yep.
We made that change, that does not mirror the liquor permit.
We lessened it.
We lessened it.
Because if we don't, there's not going to be, we're basically going to say, very, very limited, and that's why we, we had a consensus to do that. So we had a bunch who, Commissioner Higley, or Commissioner Petronella?
Yeah, on, I guess this is from, from staff that came through, but on, on Section F, the separation for T-Ville is 1,000 feet from another existing dispensary, 1,500 feet of, from schools, and 100 feet from public buildings, parks. Okay, so that's, that's what we have in there. And dispensing, that's production facility, dispensing facilities, again, 1,000 feet from existing dispensary, 1,500 feet from schools, and 100 feet from public buildings, parks, recreation areas, and places of worship. So, and I, I believe that's what was discussed.
Yeah.
So that's how we got it. And I got a question on, well, first of all, on, on number three, or Item B, number three, cultivator, the minimum establishment is, they're saying it's got to be not less than 15,000 square feet. So somebody could come in and want to put up 50,000 square feet. I look at that building, I don't care if it's 15,000 or 150,000 square feet, I look at that building and how it's going to be constructed, and what security and all, and all the regulations, it's going to have an appearance of an industrial type of building. I am not for this type of facility being plopped in the middle of a residential area. I, I just can't see that. I think, you know, we, we have to consider the residences and landowners where I think it could be just a burden on them. And also, on Item Number Eight down below, micro-cultivator. Now, that says you can have a micro-cultivator, not less than 2,000 square feet facility. So anybody who's got a decent-sized piece of acreage can also have a micro-cultivation establishment in their backyard, is, 2,000 square feet is a small, maybe it's a large greenhouse, if you will, but do we want to go for that in a residential area?
Well, we're not, because we're not, we don't include any residential areas in our applicable zones.
We were talking about, you know, allowing establishments in, in residential zones. So I'm just putting that out for, you know, food, food for thought.
Commissioner Petronella, if I, if, if I could, or do you want to, I don't want to interrupt you.
No, I'm good.
Okay. So with regard to the aesthetics of what a facility may or may not look like, I can't speak in particular, but I can tell you that money appears to be no object for the individuals, the companies that are in this business. And if they were putting up a facility and we needed it to look like it fit naturally into the neighborhood, I think if we made that a condition, they will go the distance to make sure that it, it's not going to look like a warehouse stuck in the middle of Thompsonville. Like, they, they seem, from what I have heard in my communications with them, that, you know, they don't want to come in and devalue neighborhoods. They are very interested in building. So my only, my only comment is, I have learned with this group that we, we tell them what we would like, we ask them, we guide them and work with them. And the assumptions that, how it is going to, what it might look like, how it's going to function, is very much a collaboration between them and us and through the application process of what we want it to be. And they do seem to go the extra mile more often than not, that I have seen, to accommodate a community's desires. The growing facility, I did have a chance to go to a growing facility. We were not able to tour that facility. I can tell you, it was a very impressive looking Butler building that did not look like a Butler building. I mean, it looked like it was constructed as, you would have, you would have thought it was a, an old building that had been there for years. But that's sort of the aesthetic that they put around that building to make it fit into the space that they were occupying. So I just wanted to just throw that observation out there for you.
I couldn't disagree with you more, but I don't think anybody's going to make a 15,000 square foot building look like my house and go.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to imply that it would look like your house, but it would look like a commercial building that would go in that particular part of town. So if you were thinking about where the strand is, and I'm not, you know, if they were to turn that into a growing facility, it would look like a building that would go in that space. It wouldn't be a building that would go next door to a residence.
And I'm not talking about T-Ville specifically, but as far as allowing cultivation facilities within residential zones or R-88 and so forth, and that's more specifically where I am. Now, if you're talking about micro cultivation and so forth, I saw that, and it says that they can be 2,000 square feet. And does that mean, my question is, is, does that mean that somebody with enough of property in a residential house, can they put up a micro cultivating operation in their backyard? I'm not sure.
If we don't include R-88, they can't. So we solved that problem by not including R-88. So basically, take it off the table so we can move forward. I am sorry that I mentioned R-88. I think we should proceed with not even talking about R-88. That takes that question right off the table. They can't have it in a residential zone.
Mm-hmm.
Period. End of story. So I like to call them agricultural zones too, because they're mixed in this town. So we will not be having any cultivation in agricultural zones, even though we don't really have an agricultural zone. Okay? Let me take that off the table so we can move forward. How's that for moving forward? Commissioner Mag, are you set, John?
Yeah, good, thank you.
Yeah, I only had one question, which was, your minimum cultivation area is, what, about 15,000 square feet? And somebody could put up larger than minimum square footage for cultivation. In order to level the playing field between a high density area of Thompsonville and west of the town, we're trying to devise regulations that can help that situation. So do we indeed have enough room available within the given restrictions? Let's say in this case, 100 feet of residential property. Do we have enough available space where somebody can indeed put up a dispensary as well as cultivation, 15,000 square feet? Has somebody physically looked at it, whether it's possible? I haven't.
Are you saying in Thompsonville?
Yeah.
Or in general?
In Thompsonville.
Well, I don't know.
Maybe Ben can elaborate.
I haven't gone parcel by parcel to, you know, check the building coverage for each parcel, but there are some industrial parcels, zoned I-1 in Thompsonville. There are some former, I believe, town owned buildings on larger parcels.
Buildings and grounds?
Yeah, in the TD2 zone. So there may be some. I haven't gone parcel by parcel, though.
I think it'd be behooves not to, in this hearing, identify those parcels, Commissioner Mag, but there, I believe there are three.
Right, if there is plenty, that's all I want to do, not identify each and every individual.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Seeing, I think the questions are done, can we proceed to instruct staff to take these regulations that are currently in front of us so that they can proceed to write up the legal requirements for us to have the public hearing? I believe that's necessary so we can move forward with this? Or you have a presentation, I'm sorry. Absolutely, I'm looking at you, son of a gun.
We do, we do have to have a public hearing.
Yes, we do. So I am so sorry, Ben, please. Absolutely, you've done a lot of work on this. John, you don't have to go far.
Was there something I said?
No, I didn't. I thought it was being.
Okay. So this was just a presentation done that we, we as staff, myself and Georgie, the other assistant town planner, put together, basically off of the regulations that we had drafted, that, the revisions that you guys received, just some maps that we had, we had created here. This here shows the distances from, we did, basically did a buffer around school locations, town parks, places of worship. And this icon here is our schools that we have on, that we have on file in our GIS database. So some, it may be up to date, maybe up to the last couple of years. If there's any revisions, we can make those. But basically, the point of this map was just to show, you know, kind of the overview of town as to where these buffers are areas that are in these separation distances where one could not go, just based on what's here.
Based on what you're, on the proposal in front of us?
Yeah. So this next one, these are just the zones that we proposed that they, that these uses be allowed in. So this is, this is excluding all of the R zones. It's just these zones that are here, I-1, I-2, IP, and BR in relation to schools, public buildings, public parks, places of worship. So let's see here, this is the industrial park down here. This BR section here is, this is, I believe, Ten Hazard Avenue here, that property, whereas I think it's Petco and ShopRite area. This is the mall. There actually is a place of worship located inside the mall. So there's, there's that buffer there. That would be, that would be in play. Let's see, the rest of this is, this is all I-1, I-2. There's some BR up here, I believe, at the old Mass Mutual building. Is that the area up there? The I-1 off Manning Road here, and then the rest of these industrial I-1s down here. So this is just kind of an overview of where, if, if this was drafted the way it is now and proposed, this is where it would be allowed, these, these uses. And excluding obviously the areas that are buffered. And then this is the buffers for the Thompsonville districts that we are proposing to, the way the, right, the way these, this draft is to allow them. And so it's in TD2, TD4, and TD5. I did have a question for you guys. I'm not from here, so I understand this is the, this is the Alcorn building. Are there still classes conducted here? So would that still be considered?
No, from my understanding, it's strictly an administrative building now. I think in the third floor is our IT staff. On the middle floor is the Board of Education offices, and in the basement now is the Social Services Department. I don't believe there's any classes. If there is, it's temporarily, just because they haven't moved something out to the old Fermi High School.
Okay.
It's like, well.
Okay, so there's no, okay. There is the park in the rear.
Yeah, there is the park in the rear. And that park is going to be expanded, from my understanding.
Okay, so we can make, we'll make the adjustment to the map, but that was counted as a school for this. It's in the school database that we have for the GIS, so it was counted here.
Probably because the Board of Ed's offices are in there.
Yeah, but it's not really, but it's, but it's a park.
Right, but that changes the 1,500 to the?
Yes.
Yeah, so, just based on that here, I mean, these, this property here, I believe there's the, the park in the rear, and this is, I believe, all, there's, I think, a pumping station here.
Steel dingle.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
Right, Commissioner Lamel?
Yes, it is. Yep, there's a town road back there. There's a town road back there.
There is there for the pumping station. Yeah, access for the pumping station.
Goes from Windsor Street to Harford Avenue.
Yep.
It's town road.
And then actually, it used to go all the way back to the VFW, I think.
So I mean, if this is, if this buffer is going to be drastically reduced, then you can, you know, include kind of this area in here. There's these, I believe there's places of worship along here. I think there's a park here, here, and then the pond area and park, and then the park over, Higgins Park area over here. So this is the, this would be the area that would, would be outside of those separation distances that we'd be looking at here. And just, you know, just in, in conjunction with the TD zoning regulations, TD4 and TD5 do allow for retail stores. So if it was something like a, the retailer, if that was the application, if that was the, what the permit would be for, retail stores are special permit. And so it's in conjunction with that in the TD4 and TD5 already. And to package stores, I believe, are TD5 special permit. So it would be in that similar kind of use, if it was something like a retailer permit. Obviously, we can adjust the table, the use table accordingly, but yeah, that was kind of it. These are the kind of, these are the maps that we came up with, just to kind of show the buffer locations and where, where it could not go, where it can go, based on what we have now. I mean, we can email you guys all these and see, you guys can use them for reference. And you guys have any questions on these maps or?
You can see we have a lot of churches, so there's, and we see it again more every day. And when we do, they, they will lose those buildings off of tax rolls too, by the way, everybody. So except for sewer fee, that's about what happens. So Ben, thank you, we and staff very much, thank you. That was very helpful. Really visually shows us the limitations or whatever we're dealing with.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, I wanted to wait until the presentation. What was the reason of the exclusion of the other business zones? I mean, I know there's, there's smaller zones. It's kind of hard.
It was just kind of a starting point, to be honest with you. I kind of looked at other towns that have had regulations and saw what they did, and they seemed to include it in their industrial and their, I guess, larger area kind of business zones that allowed for more retail uses, just in case it was a retailer that was coming in and not, not thinking about just the, like, you know, the cultivator or micro cultivator, but kind of looking at it as a whole. So say it was just a retail operation, if there was already retail there, it might fit. But if you guys, you know, think differently or you want to change that or?
Yeah, I mean, I, some of the, some of the other business zones do allow some form of retail, whether in package stores or other retail. So I'm not seeing the necessary limitation. I'm just.
Either, Commissioner, either am I. I like to, personally, I like to see the other business zones, but I, I just, you know, I don't want to open up a whole can of worms again. Myself personally, I had no problems opening up the other business zones. Is there real audita from anyone to?
Got a question just on the modeling here.
Well, give me one second, one of the business zones. Is there any audita to opening up to all the business zones? Does someone really?
The other zones are the business local.
Yeah.
And.
Business general.
Business general.
Yeah. It looks to me there's a consensus to add.
Add it, okay.
Add those business zones. And I guess you'll have to change the maps accordingly.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
And somebody had a question.
On the modeling, so just going back to the places of worship in Thompsonville, you used 100 feet. So how did we pick the 100 feet? So is there, we'll use St. Pat's. So if you stand on the stairs of St. Pat's, are there uses, are there buildings that would qualify within 100 feet of St. Pat's to do cannabis sales? Are there structures there that would fall under the reg? So is what is an arbitarial number or do we look at, maybe draw a line 100 feet or draw? What encompass, what did it encompass?
Yeah, these buffers are, it's from the, so the way the GIS runs the buffer, it's from the center point of the parcel.
Center point.
So it's not from, it's not from the front steps. That could be a different measure. Yeah, it's from the center point of the parcel and then originates a 100 foot buffer around the.
So when you went off in the center of St. Pat's, did that encompass buildings that would be allowed to have cannabis?
No, this would be built.
Would they be?
This would be parcels that would be excluded because they fall within that 100 foot buffer.
Okay.
As the separation distance, outside that buffer.
Outside of that 100 feet, there's buildings that would comply to that kind of business? If you go to 200 feet or? I'm just wondering how, how it got to 100 and not 200 or 300.
It was just based off of the, the separation distances that we, we talked about at the previous meeting. That was the 100 feet. I didn't go and check to see if each, each individual buildings were residential, you know, two family, three family.
Right. Is there, is there buildings that would be allowed even 200 feet away from St. Pat's to have cannabis?
Well, cultivating or dispensing?
Either or.
I would think dispense, if I may, I would think, you and I both noticed, you know, you know this better than I do, but I know it pretty well.
The storefronts, you're saying?
I would think the dispensaries, cultivating is a different issue.
Yeah, and the, the regulation would be for the whole, the zone as, as the whole thing, not just for certain, certain properties.
I mean, you're right, there's probably not very few. I think there's very few in Thompsonville, for instance, that would qualify for any type of cultivation business to make any profit.
Right.
Retail is different.
Yeah. Because the, because the, the mixed use buildings on Pearl Street, for example, could have cannabis.
Yes.
Yeah, possible, retail, yeah, possible retail operation, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to get my arms around the places of worship and 100 feet.
We'll come back to this again, but I think at this point, we can, I think there's a pretty good consensus here at this point to kind of end the conversation so the staff can go forward to develop the legal requirements for us to move to the next step.
So.
We don't, we don't need to have a vote, I think, you know.
So no residential zones?
No residential zones.
Add BL and BG zones?
And everything else stays.
Okay. Cool.
So when you say no residential zones, you're excluding Thompsonville?
No, because that's a TD, those are the TD zones. That's why we did Thompsonville separately, because they're the TD special zones.
The R zones, we're eliminating the R zone.
R zones. I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's my bad.
Sorry I brought that up at all.
Well, we got to make sure we have it right.
I just want to, yeah, thank you. All right.
Yeah, I think the staff has done a wonderful job making the presentation.
Yeah, thank you. So we'll make, take a motion to table this item, keep it on agenda because staff's going to be coming back, you know, well, you know, soon with the next step for us. So I'll entertain a motion to table.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley to table, seconded by Commissioner Lamel to table. Item A, discussion on cannabis, so we can pick up the next step. And thank you very much, Councilman Santinella, for your insight and assistance with this. Much appreciated. Take care. Now we'll move on to item B, outdoor storage in industrial zone discussion. I know we have the applicants here. Evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Commissioner. Again, Mark Lockwood and Robert Frye, attorneys representing Connecticut Mulch and Connecticut Organics on Mullen Road. Thank you for taking the time again. I know you guys have had a busy last month. Just again, kind of summarize where we're at. We've had several discussions with you on the expanding the outdoor storage, just to go over the high points from the narrative for some of the new commission members, and And we're looking at efficient use of land in the industrial zone and supporting business needs and avoiding some bottlenecks in production specifically for our client. We've worked with staff over the last weeks, listening to your input and comments from the last meetings, and staff put together a revised text amendment for your consideration, where we have reduced the maximum considered area that you could consider maximum for under special permit, and as well as provision to allow for only products that are processed on-site. Because I know there was some concern about bringing products from, you know, not, not that our client would do that, but, you know, being cognizant that this is for the entire zone, not just our client. So, those changes were made, and I think they were good changes, and I thank staff for working with us on, on making those changes. So, we're just kind of here to see if we can have the process, answer any further questions. And as we discussed before, you know, our intention would be for the commission to consider the text amendment here and get it over to CROG, if that's, so what the commission would like to do, so we continue the process of formalizing them. And then, you know, eventually, our client would come back to go through that review process with you.
Before we get our own discussion, does the staff want to add anything to this before we go into commissioner discussion? No, pretty self-explanatory, we've been through this for a couple of meetings. Open to commissioner comments on this. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Gray?
One, one question, comment, concern. Under B, number, item three, it says the commission may require outdoor storage to be screened. I'm feeling uncomfortable about that because we may. I think we, if we do allow side yard, I think we need to have that screened from the public. And I think that's really an important thing. So, I would like to see something that the commission shall require out, screening for outdoor storage if side yard is used. I, I just feel that it's one thing if it's behind the building, you're driving by, you really kind of get a glimpse of it. But if it's in the side yard, you're, you're going to see, see it all the time. So, I do have that one thing.
So, you would like to, if I may, if I may, privilege of the chair. You would like to see the commission shall require all outdoor storage be screened if side yard is used, but also leave in, in addition, the commission may require outside, outside storage for the backyard. I don't know how else to put the word there. You don't want to limit that, isn't?
Right, I don't care about if it's in the backyard, because it's their backyard.
So, it may, may for backyard would be fine with you.
But if it's in the side yard, I, I feel more comfortable that it, it be screened. It would be something there, just.
Okay.
Okay.
That's, okay, that's a comment to consider, thank you. Any other comments from the commissioners on this? Commissioner D'Antoni?
Yeah, just on the point added on number two, and we, we may have talked about this last time. And, 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 I mean, I do remember talking about the storage of the finished product. Seeing it on paper, though, now, it's not contradictory, but it is stricter than what the current regulation says. So, I, I mean, is it problematic? I don't know, not necessarily. But I just wanted to point out that generally, it's, these changes are becoming less restrictive, except for that one line. So, just something to think about. I don't think.
I think that we kind of did, because we're grappling with this, and a good, very good point, we're grappling with this not for your use. As you eloquently brought out when you first come up here again tonight, you understand it. We're looking at this from a town standpoint, not just your use. And that's what we've been tug-of-warring here this whole time with this. So, I think that's why we, we added this in here, not to limit, to try to limit it. You're absolutely correct. Commissioner Higley?
I have a, a number one, says limited to no more than 50% of the rear and/or side yards. I'm of the same opinion as Commissioner DeGray. It's, the side yard should not be the same size of storage as the rear yard. The rear yard, nobody sees, supposedly. But the side yard is seen from the road, from people's windows, and I'm just not comfortable with 50%.
Would you have a, if I may, so that we can, you know, move along, do you have a suggestion of what?
Well.
You're, you're not happy with what there is. I'll read it so everyone sees it. Limited to no more than 50% of the rear and/or side yard outdoor space. So, do you have a recommendation of what you would like?
I'd leave it at the 20% for the side yard.
So, you would be happy, or?
Well, no.
Happy, I didn't say happy, but you were, you're suggesting limited to no more than 50% of the rear yard for outdoor space, and no more than 20% for the side yard?
Yeah.
I, I think that that's being misinterpreted.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I believe the intent behind that was just because of all lots are in, are different shapes, sizes, and whatever, that it's limited to no more than 50. So, and this is up to your guys' discretion as the commission, because it's a special permit. So, it doesn't, it's not automatic, it has to go up to 50. It can be, be up to 50, depend, and depending on the layout, you know, of your, the parcel, depending on, you know, where it's located, this, that's why it was and/or, it wasn't required 50. It was just.
You hit the four?
Up to 50.
I think that it's cleaner if you give them a percentage to start as a base point. Otherwise, every special use permit that comes in, we're going to be dickering about, oh, should it be 35%? Should it be 40%? Oh, maybe we should give them 50 because they're a big lot, or 50 because they're a corner lot. So, I think that we've, in the past, used a certain percentage to start with, and then gone from there. And I would prefer to see a 20% for side yards.
So, you feel like a 20% basement for side yards and a 50% max for rear yard?
Well, you're saying and/or for side yard. And it says of the rear, so it's either of the rear and the side, or of the rear or the side. I'm not understanding it. You don't say and/or the rear, you just say and/or the side.
Yeah, I would question, if, would you combine the rear and the side yards and say you could have up to 50% of all of that area? Or is this?
No, that's what it says now.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm wondering if that is what it says. So, so it's the combined, right? Was that the intent? That it's, you combine the rear and the side yard, and you can have up to 50% of that total?
Correct. And I'd, I'd rather separate it. Commissioner DeGray was talking about a separation of side and rear in another matter. I'd rather separate it and look at it completely separate from each other.
Right, there seems to be, I don't want to say total consensus.
Again, that's just me.
Yeah, there seems to be somewhat of a consensus to separate the requirements for the rear yard, have them different from the requirements of the backyard. Side yard, excuse me.
Yeah, I guess the way I was reading this was limited to no more than 50% of the rear, the rear and/or side yard. So, if you have a rear, you know, if you have a rear yard that you're proposing this in, you're limited to no more than 50%. Hypothetically, if you have a lot in, in the industrial zone that you don't say for, just because of lot layout, you don't have a deep rear yard, or, you know, but you have a massive side yard, that this 50%, you're limited to no more than 50% in the side yard, because that's where your potential outdoor storage would be.
And, and I think there's a consensus, at least from two or three of us, that we don't like that. That might not, I just said two or three, I didn't say all.
What about a corner lot? How does that?
So, you like the 50% for rear yard, and then you want to set a certain percent for any side yard?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I?
Yeah, please, you're, you're.
Yeah, I just, the reason we were talking is, is again, and I hate to keep coming back to the specifics, but this is an industrial zone that we're talking about. And each lot, you know, our particular client, it's bordering on an industrial, their side yard borders their property exactly on the industrial yard. And what we were trying to give the commission the discretion in the special permit process that you have, and you could say, gee, this particular applicant, the side yard doesn't make any sense. Like, we shouldn't give them any storage, or total looking at the lot. And that's the same with the screening. The screening, we put may, because it gives the commission that discretion, which the special permit process, you know, I've worked on it, it works very well. You can look at each individual application. And that's where we come from, is to give the, because it's an, again, we're talking industrial, and not on top of, we have buffers for residentials and setbacks, and we're trying to give that flexibility to you versus kind of a hard line.
Hardline stance.
Anything else, Attorney Frye?
Just because every, I agree with everything Marcus said. Both of those provisions were written with, with an eye towards giving the commission latitude. And as Commissioner Petronella said, you know, every, every plot is different. You have, you may have corner lots where the side yard actually functions as a rear yard, but because of the eccentricities of the property. So, I guess that's all I'll say, is because of that, leaving them as written would give you guys more, much more latitude than, than it sounds like you're leaning towards.
Not to be argumentative, however, you can go in for variance. Your property is unique in that you have no rear yard, but you just have side yard, and you would get it. Like, I can't speak for the zoning board of appeals, but you would have a legitimate area to hang your hat on.
And I'm not, I'm certainly not here to argue with.
No, no, I know. No, I'm saying, me, I don't want to.
And the problem is, as we mentioned before, this particular text recommendation, I'd be quite sure with you, staff, and with fellow commissioners, I've been thinking a lot about this, and I'm not saying it's keeping me up at wake at night. We had other things that were keeping me up awake at night. But I have to be honest with you, we just keep trying to shoehorn this, and I just feel like we're going down a, every meeting, we're going down a rabbit hole. And, and we certainly understand your limitations, don't get me wrong. But again, as I said before, we have to think townwide on this. And we just keep going down this rabbit hole of trying to accommodate you without opening up the door. And I, and I, I'm wrestling with it, to be quite frank with you. I'm still wrestling with it. I can't come to resolution of my own mind. That's why I'm open to comments here from the commission. I want to, my opinion is we either going to move forward with this, or we're going to end it, to be quite frank with you. I don't think we can continue on any longer. We either got to move forward with this, or we take it off the agenda and say it's staying the way it is. So, I'm really going around the table. I know we have two new people here tonight, but please feel free to contribute your thoughts on this. Commissioner Monstrum, go ahead, please.
I have one question for the staff. Explain to me number one and number six. Number one says limited to no more than whatever percentage of rear and/or side yard. And number six says, no storage, no encroachment into front side or rear yard setback or principal accessory structure. Is that one click, or am I misunderstanding?
As far as the, not encroaching the storage into the, into the setbacks?
Yeah, between one and six.
The six was added because if you're using something for storage, it's possible that it doesn't fit the definition of a structure or an accessory structure. So, to keep it out of that setback area, this number six was added.
Does number one limit them to a certain percentage of use of the side and the rear yard? And therefore, when you go to number six, it says, oops, nothing is allowed in the side or rear or front yards? Or am I misunderstanding?
Yeah, the, the, number six is referring to the, the zoning setbacks, not for the actual rear yard or side yard.
So, so basically, there, it's, he's saying that you can't store anything in the actual side, the side yard or rear yard setback, but between that setback and the structure is where you can have the storage.
Storage.
That's what, sorry.
It, it does at first glance look contradictory, but it is referencing the setbacks.
Okay, I get it.
Does it not read that way? I can change it.
It, it does, if you first read it, it was like, wait a second.
Okay.
It says, it says setbacks very clearly, but if you're not, if you're not thinking, you have to think setback versus that space in between.
Right. Commissioner?
So, the way I was interpreting it is you can't store material all the way up to the property line. It has to be back from it.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So, we've had two, Commissioner Linsky?
Yeah, I'm just, I was looking at number one and the discussion on the 20% versus the 50%. But if we were to leave it at the 50%, we still have control over it as far as granting a special permit, correct? So, it depends on the circumstances that the application comes in at. You could go up to the 50%, but you don't have to if it looks like it's going to be a big issue for the neighborhood, or whatever, or the type of stuff they're storing, whatever.
We could, because of a special use permit, we couldn't decide less than 50%.
Yeah, so that's really, that's really the control on it.
And, and zoning enforcement?
Yes.
Okay, you have to remember that, you know, now, that's also zoning enforcement.
Right.
So, yes, those are our avenues by special use permit and zoning enforcement to make sure it doesn't exceed whatever, whatever number we plug in there.
Yeah, okay.
I agree with Commissioner Linsky, just leave it at 50, and then we have our, you know, judgment as they come before us. Because every, every lot's different. Every, every parcel's different. Not to exceed 50.
I like that.
Not to exceed.
I like that. Because they want people coming back.
Right. You don't want people to come back.
Limited to more than.
We love the business, though.
Well, it says, right now, it says limited to no more than, or you can put not to exceed.
I'm sorry, I was just joking, I apologize.
It's all right. You like that, Mr.?
I like that.
Not to exceed? Yeah. And like Commissioner Linsky was saying, when they come before us, we could look at everything.
Yeah, you still have to approve the special permit.
Okay, so there seems to be, let's go through the changes we want to make here, so we can proceed. So, there seems to be, I'm looking here, I'm not asking for, unless somebody wants to make motions, so we can vote, because I'm not quite sure, I'm trying to read here. Again, I'm sorry, the two alters, you don't get a chance to vote on this, even though your opinions do count. So, please feel free to speak up, please. I'm trying to gauge here how we can proceed. So, there was a suggestion by two of the commissioners to break out the rear and side yards to different percentages. So, I know there's two who wanted that. And I'm taking it, Karan, you didn't want that, you liked the way it is. Commissioner Lamo, you like the way it is. You like the way it is. Commissioner Linsky, Commissioner Petronella, you like the way it is. Okay, so that's four to three. So, guess what? It stays as is. Okay, that's the way it is. So, it's going to be limited to no more than 50%. We're not taking votes, but I'm just trying to gauge here. Limited to no more than 50% of the rear and/or side yard outdoor space. That's going to remain, based on the consensus of the majority. And remember, it's been brought up, this is special permit. Number two stays, there hasn't been any, everyone seems to be happy with the way number two is written here. And with the IE caveat in there, which is nice. There was a commissioner who, DeGray and Commissioner Higley, who brought up a little rewording on three, and helped me out with this a little bit. The commission shall require outdoor storage be screened on side yard, and may require outdoor storage screened for the rear yard. Is there consensus to keep that?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's consensus to change to that. I'll do it again, Ben, or did you get it? Okay. Five seems to be no discussion, 15 feet in height, people seem to be happy with that. That seems to be kind of like the standard we've been going with. Six, that was explained, so that's staying. Seven and eight, there's no discussion, so that seems to be appropriate. I think that's basically it. So, I think if there's no more discussion on this item, we've, I think staff, it seems to be consensus here. Again, we don't need to take a vote, but it seems to be consensus here to proceed with the next step for these revisions.
Thank you.
Oh, all right, everybody's all set?
So.
I guess we'll see you during public hearing time.
See you back again.
Just for clarification, you're saying that we could move forward with sending this to CROG?
Yes, yeah, with the, with the couple of changes we suggest, absolutely. And then, you know, et cetera, et cetera, whatever other procedures you need to do to move forward. Yes.
Thank you for, thank you for the information, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys, thank you for hanging with us, especially over the last.
No, we appreciate you taking us.
Six weeks or so, we've been pretty busy, as you know.
Yeah, you've had long meetings, almost to the next day, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. So, now we're going to be going on to item C, food truck regulations. I see our applicant is here.
There's an application?
No, not our applicant, but our, not our applicant, that's advocate, thank you. Much more appropriate, advocate, there we go.
Hi, guys.
You need to identify yourself, is the mic on?
Yes. Michelle McCullough, for, we are representing 504 Hazard Ave.
And again, just for the, for the new commissioners, these are, she's the advocate who brought some things for us to decide or discuss whether we want to change our food truck regulations. I think we have in front of us, if you don't have everything, if someone could share with the, the proposed change, possible changes to the food truck regulations. I'm sure you had a chance to look at them yourself. Anything you want to add on that, or?
No, we thought that the changes that were sent over to us looked appropriate.
Does the staff want to add anything before we start discussion?
I just, I increased the distance to mirror the separation distance for packaged stores at 1,000, 1,000 feet from the brick and mortar. That was the edit that was made.
Okay, thank you. Is there a discussion? Commissioner DeGray?
Just one thing. On the current ones, it says we have an H, all mobile food vendors must be licensed by the health district. It's not here on the proposed.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, it's, unfortunately, it wasn't spaced, it's H.
Oh, okay.
Did you see it?
Then I missed, oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah.
My bad. They didn't put the number place right. Can't read. Thanks.
Any other questions?
I got a statement.
Commissioner Laimo?
Yeah, I'd like to know if there's any interest in committee, or commission, to table this for our second meeting in April. I had a discussion with Representative Hall today. This is active at the legislation. It's going to be coming out of committee.
Yes.
And probably there's support for it on both sides. Probably going to be voted for to continue the governor's emergency part of how you're operating now, till April of 2023.
2023, yes.
Yeah, so let's table it till they come out of committee, at least for, because what they're going to do then, is they're going to look at making the change forever.
Right.
In this next, you know, give them time. It's a short session this year, and I talked to her this evening, and she seems very optimistic that this is going to go forward and extend out till April of 2023. So you're just, you're operating under that now?
Yes.
Correct? And that's working fine for you?
Yes, it's extended, it goes through March 31st at this point.
Right. So the vote is hopefully going to take place before the end of March, a couple more weeks. It's got to come out of committee, because I don't think they want it to lapse and then try to bring it back to life.
I hope so.
So that's what I was told today. So instead of trying to make all these, you know, then we can come visit it again, we'll give the, since government moves slow, we'll give them to the second meeting in March for us.
We'll stay on top of it.
Yeah. And then, then you're fine. And then you, then it'll be a process where the legislation is going to take it up for permanent outdoor dining throughout the whole state. Because the restaurants have been very happy
Yes.
with the outdoor dining, and it's been successful for the revenue sources during the, you know, the height of the pandemic. So they're trying to look at it globally throughout the state.
Wonderful.
And you, I think you're, so everything's fine now, right?
Yes, yep.
So with that, with that, I'm looking around. I will entertain a motion that we table this. We don't have to put a date, we can just take table forever. That we table this until we see what the state legislature is going to do, and then we might have to bring it back up, and maybe we might not have to. Motion made by Commissioner Monstrivers, that can be by Commissioner Higley to table item C. So this remains on our agenda, just, it remains more as a tag, a reminder for us to keep on top of this.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night. Thanks for bringing it up for us.
That's great, Frank.
Yeah, it makes our life easier.
Sure does. All right, is there any correspondence? Any commissioners' correspondence? Any Director of Development Services report tonight?
Yes. So Monday night, the town council approved the reorganization of development services. So my, my title, when I started here, was Director of Development Services, and I had oversight on building, planning and zoning, community and economic development, and blight, and the development services. Since I've started here, all of those departments, well, one, the building department actually was supposed to be under the Department of Public Works by charter. So we had to send them to Public Works. Donald was very happy. Excuse me. And subsequently, Nelson has taken his department to great heights and really did not need oversight anymore. And I actually made this recommendation that they be separated from development services and become their own department. And so I will now be the Director of Planning. And what's, what is great about that to me is that I could actually focus more on planning than management, I guess. So I'm still going to be around and hopefully be able to really focus on planning and the regulations and the P O C D. Unfortunately, someone else will not be here. Mr. Winter has given his resignation as of today. So he's going on to be the town planner in Windsor Locks, and I congratulate him for that. That's, that's great.
Good for you.
But very upsetting.
Ben, I'd have to say, as chairman, we've only worked together for the last maybe three months now. And I really was impressed. And I'm going to miss you. It really was great, at least from my standpoint. I'm probably speaking on behalf of a lot of the commissioners here, but I know you and I were developing a good working relationship there. And I wish you all the luck in Windsor Locks. Don't be a stranger. You're right, you're right around the corner. It's a wonderful town also, a lot of good people there. I'm sure you'll do, you'll do well there. And thank you. Thank you so much.
If you have any problem with the assistant fire chief over there, let me know.
We know a lot of people in Windsor Locks, Ben, so if you've got any problems, just give us a call.
Okay.
Again, you know, on behalf of the commission, really.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your service.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Lori, is this effective?
Ben has been great. He's been really, you know.
Is it effective now? Or is there an effective date coming for your position?
I mean, I've kind of been like, even, I've kind of been doing it all anyway. We're just kind of easing into it. We're working on budget right now and trying to separate the department again. So when I started, we actually combined all the monies together. So now we're separating things out. It's not going to change, really. I could have pretty much the same amount of work, just in different areas, so.
More efficient.
And Ben, you, two weeks, or you have a, end date?
Yeah, two weeks.
Two weeks? Two weeks. So we'll get to Ben, one more meeting.
One more.
No, this is his last one.
He's going to be at the Skyline Diner.
Yeah. All right, any, any applications to be received?
Or Gonzola.
Sorry.
Best there.
Yeah, have you finished with your report? Are you all set, Lori?
I did want, just, the Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies has their annual meeting coming up. It is the night of our next meeting. However, if, Nick, did you say that you've been here 27 years?
Twenty-six.
So, I mean, did you ever get your Years of Service Award?
I think I got one.
Are you sure?
I don't, yeah, I did.
Did you?
Yeah, I did. I did. I think so.
Okay. And Ginny, how long have you been on the commission?
I was a secretary.
How long have you been on the commission?
Not 27 years.
Have you been on, because it's 12-year awards as well.
I don't, no, I don't think I've been, I've been on 12 years.
She was still working 12 years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I don't think anybody's up for any awards on this commission. Apparently there is on the Z B A. So, but if anybody wants to go, it is, we do have some limited funds, but it is also our regular meeting night.
It is our regular meeting night, but we do have alternates, so we probably could have, two or three people could go, and we still could have a meeting, so.
Speaking of staff, right.
Yeah, so, you know, just coordinate through that, through me and through Lori, if you're interested. I think we could let two or three people go if you want to go.
Right. And we do need to get this, by the 22nd, we need to know.
Yeah. So just please let us know.
So sooner the better. I'm sorry I sent it out so late. Kind of got lost.
Any applications to be received?
Yeah, you have three applications to be received. There is a special use permit for commercial vehicle, special use permit for special event, and the special use permit for a class three liquor package store.
Okay. Any opportunities or unresolved issues?
Did the February 25th attorney's report end up in our packet by accident tonight?
No, that is the report from the town attorney. Basically just stating the new dates of when the court hearings are going to come.
Because it wasn't on the agenda.
No, it's just the informational.
Information, okay.
Yeah. That's just to inform us to.
I'm sorry? Okay.
Correspondence.
Correspondence, thank you.
Just to let us know, you know, what's happening with the court dates. All right, having said that, entertain, everybody's all set. Entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Commissioner, degraded adjourned, seconded by Commissioner Higley. All those in favor? unanimous to adjourn at 9:20.